We're here, right? The Shenbuck and Plank Road meeting. Helen Hart, okay. And we're looking for Roland for MS. Look here, they're joining the meeting. That should do it.
I said, do you expect the BCR to...
Test piece on that. Seeing the token here.
I said, here.
Oh, there's Cliff.
I'm there. Joanne.
Yes, I can.
Uh, do you expect the BCR to be here or is it...
Yes, he... Yep, he's on.
I'm here. Can you guys hear me?
Do you want to come behind me?
Yeah.
Good. I don't know why it's not screeching, but it's not. I'll play it quick. Okay. All right, well, we're all here. Let's, uh, let's begin the meeting. Everyone, please rise for the pledge. Pledge of allegiance to the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in the world. Okay. Mark, would you mind recording this?
Uh, are you able to start that, Ellen, or should I?
Or Ellen, somebody?
Ellen?
Ellen?
Yes.
Okay. I'm recording now. Are you getting a message that it's being recorded?
Yes.
Yes.
We have no secretary. That's why. Thank you. Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
So, let's start with Firelight. If everyone else would please mute their mics if they're not already.
All right. Hi, everyone. This is Bobby Fresh, CEO of Firelights. We are just waiting on our engineer, Ellen, to win their call. Oh, Ellen's here.
I heard him. Yeah. We have a digital, uh, I don't know, screen is starting. David, uh, I'm sorry. Log it by computer that we have. I called on the phone.
Okay. Well, I, we can hear you good, so that'll work. Well, thank you. No, that's all right. Thank, yeah, thank you, everyone. This is Bobby Fresh, trying to see you on Firelight. Very excited to see you moving forward. First, thanks, everyone, for the kind work able to go in us to walk through a couple of weeks ago. It was productive and a good day to be walking around the site. So today, we're not going to take too much of everyone's time tonight. We, our site plan is now finalized. We've done quite a, quite a number of studies and, you know, basically just want to let the board know that we're pushing forward at the full speed with the project. We expect to be basically at, uh, every meeting. For tonight, we'd like you to walk you through the site plan in, which is in its final floor now. And we'll talk through the program and layout on the site. And then we'd also like to briefly discuss the memo from Mark and Ellen from Loney McBrune, the engineer consultants that went down and discussed that briefly tonight as well. So with that, let's, Matt, our chief officer, walk through the site plan.
Yeah. Hi, everybody. Bobby, thank you. I am going to share my screen. I'm going to attempt to share my screen. It wants me to change my security preferences. Also... And I can do this quickly on a pressure player. One second, I gotta go there.
While he's doing that... Oh, good, there's a feedback. I'll check in for that. Do, do we have updated maps in our possession? Or have they been submitted to this office yet?
Um, we delivered updated maps showing current site plan. With the site map, we committed to the office for our site walk-through. Plus, we had a few extra copies at the site walk-through. So you should have all those here possession with four full-size sets and ten or two size sets.
Okay.
Hello?
Yeah. Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Um, can you tell me if you can read the green chair? Can you guys see the site plan?
We see it.
Oh, great. Okay. Excellent. So, yes, we did, um, submit copies of this plan that we see here. And if it's okay for you guys, I'll just walk, start walking through it. So we came in a few months ago. I presented a site plan that was created earlier this year. Submitted actually initially in March. And that was slightly different. Because actually, the layout is substantially similar. The program is mostly tents on platforms with some common spaces and some road network. The plan you see here is, as Bobby said, our final plan. So to just to alforianate everybody, Plank Road runs on our northeast property line. The entrance to Uncle Pete's is right here. Can you guys see my cursor, my little hand hovering? Great. Okay. And the existing building at the entrance of the property is represented by this rectangle here. The, uh, the, as it stands right now, Uncle Pete's cars can more or less traverse all of this property. But when we completed this plan, they've relocated into a road network that outlines the outline. You enter the property off of Plank Road and you come in and cross a small stream and enter into the bulk of the property. On the southwest corner of the property is the Esophus Creek. And that's, that's represented over here. Between the stream and the Esophus Creek is really the usable area of Uncle Pete's campground. So you enter in off of Plank Road, cross the little stream, and then the road network that you see outlined here is largely existing. This road exists today that I'm tracing with my mouse. And this road exists today. The only new section to roadway and it has, does this road exist today? This section of roadway here is new and then these two booths of parking are new. But everything else is, is the road network that currently exists on the property. The site is largely wooded. There is a clear meadow in this upper area here that I'm outlining and another clear meadow in this area here. This southern portion of the site is largely wooded and this one portion is mostly wooded.
I can't tell who it is, but it's, it's where we called in by phone. If you could just mute. Getting a lot of noise.
Yeah. Okay, great.
Seven, three, nine, five, three.
Great. So, um, so the, as I say, the cars on property will be confined to this road network and these parking areas. These blue and beige rectangles are our tents on platforms. I have a photo of what, a rendering of what those look like. I showed it in the past. And I'll switch to it later. I want to take two minutes. Maybe changes here. But to access the tent sites themselves, there would be a network of pads. These pads are seven or eight feet wide. We will use electric carts, like golf cart-sized vehicles, to service and access what people need to do with tents. And there's a lobby area, which is this cluster of rectangles down here. And there is an event tent on a, on a platform which is here. If, if the, and then the, there's a, a small building next to the event area. So there's a small building next to the event tent that is bathrooms and storage associated with the event tent. This is really just a tent on patio. And then in the lobby area, we have a building that is our snack shack and bathrooms. That is one building. And then there's a smaller building that's part of this rectangle, which houses some offices and a market. Those are the only proper structures on this island. We have the existing facilities building and a little garage on the other side of the entrance of the property. But the only structures that exist on, on, in, in this area are the snack shack, bathrooms, a little back of house, market area, and the, the support building for the events, which contain bathrooms and a little storage. Everything else are tents. So the, the, the balance of this lobby area are either open in the patio or in your tent. And the event area is, is as well. The next time we come back, we hope to bring floor plans and renderings of all, of all of these buildings. On, on, on the properties. One other thing I'll note while we're looking at this site plan is this dark gray area. This dark gray area is the portion of the property that is outside of the floodway and outside of the floodplain. The area, the balance of the area, the area that's gray, is the area that is in, in, in the floodway. We've got an area in the front as well as in this house, but on this portion of the property, it's the, the floodway and floodplain occupying the vast bulk of this area. But within this gray, within the area that's outside of the floodplain and outside of the floodway, we've located all of those structures, which we described previously, and also the sewer area. And now we can speak to the, our planned sewer and infrastructure utilities. But all of the sewer area is located in those areas that are outside of the floodway and outside of the floodplain. There's existing sewer at the front entrance. And our intention is to use some of that existing sewer to, to, to meet some of our needs and the balance of our needs and the reserve area requirements that they have by the sewer area contained in these, these three rectangles. Oh, another thing that I'll mention is that there are some existing uses on property that we intend to maintain. The use of, the just use of existing location. At the northern edge of the property is an existing tiny home cabin that is near the edge of the river. Our intention is to continue using that essentially as it is. Maybe we could change the decor on the inside, but the, the structure is still going to remain. And then there are a number of existing pad sites for, for campers, for guests of Uncle Pete's to pop up and set up their, their tents. They're located, you know, more or less streamside or creekside. And we're intending to, to maintain the use of eight of those creekside or streamside pad sites for, for continuation of existing use. Those, those creekside and streamside sites are within 100 feet of the, of the water horses. I know when we talked about this last time, the intention was to look at all the uses outside of that exclusion zone. And all the uses, all the uses are being located outside that exclusion zone. There are a couple of sites that upon reflection, we were thinking we could just, we, we should maintain the existing use and, and we could deliver something pretty special just with a tent on the ground, as is, as is the, the current use. I want to just talk, ask the rest of the Firelight team if there's anything else that I should include in this original presentation and make the point after there's some questions about the plan, if there are.
This is Ellen. I could add a few more comments.
Please.
Okay. Uh, leave it on that stream. Basically, a few more things. We've got a total of 155 parts, uh, proposed. The site, as existing parts, we're organizing that a bit more. As you can see, looking at the plan, there's a road network that goes through the site. Right now, it's a combination of one-way, two-way roads. We want to repurpose most of those roads and some places against your one-two-way type roads, as you'll see. Most of these roadways are really just gravel pathways, just like the existing. So it's not like we're going in to change the roads in dramatically right now. It's, they are basically lightly graded gravel roads on the set. And that's basically what we're going to have in the future. It was mentioned in the comment letter in the argument that we're using this, uh, 60-40 sway between first phase, second phase. There are pardon spots I should mention that are split between guest, guest VDA spots and forty spots. You'll see on the site plan, there are two wells. They're existing. We're going to be basically reusing the existing wells to continue to regulate public water supply at the existing campground. So we will be upgrading that to actually do new water distribution piping keeping the same wells and then modifying the existing tree, which is currently at more dissection. I should also mention on this place here that we're going to repurpose the existing sewer system up by the road. Most of the skunk bush area on the sewer is up by the road. We'll be serviced by the existing sewer system. The green areas that Matt pointed out will be our new sewer system containing the camping loops and the big thicket and forest road areas as well as the upper field and lower field. And we're going to be doing a series of pump stations to pump the waste water up to that area. The green areas will also serve as our future replacement areas should we ever have to replace the system. Guys, you probably all know the DEP and the DLH require that we provide a hundred percent reserve areas so the site will have no limit down in the future to a replacement area. The DEP and areas will be doing full waste water. You're on this. The DLH will be doing full water supply, uh, for you as well. That was all I wanted to add, which was what Matt had said. Matt had covered most of it.
Great. Thank you, thank you, Ellen. Were there any questions on the layout from the board?
My main question... Somebody asked him about anchoring of the tent sites.
I guess, that's not mine.
Yeah. Somebody asked him about the anchoring of the...
They gotta be anchored.
The anchoring? Yeah. Please.
I'm sorry.
We have a question about the anchoring of the platforms, particularly in the floodplain, floodway.
Great. Ellen? Ellen, you ready?
Sorry about that. A little sorry about that. Basically, the platforms are going to, you know, the piers. Considering, considering they're wooden piers for metal piles. They are, you know, very small across any one area. They're maybe up to a dozen per campsite. Those will be anchored down into the ground. They will not be just resting on the ground. Basically, it will be ordering down into the ground and providing significant elevation with the, you know, the concrete that's in the gravel having it anchored into the ground. And the platform itself will be above the front elevation. And any stairs are arranged to, you know, park them on the downstream side.
Ellen, I'm not sure about the downstream side. Let's, let's just talk about that. But we certainly did discuss the breakaway nature of the stairs. And, you know, it's, we'll, we'll, we'll revert back to the board to discuss the downstream aspect. And I'll let you, I'll let you.
I would, I should, I should say, I should have said downstream side and/or breakaway.
Great.
Any other questions?
Great. So, um, if there's no other questions about the, the layout, then I think we did want to discuss the memo from Mark and Ellen. And I, I don't know. Do you, Mark and Ellen, do you want to lead a presentation of the memo? Or should we just kind of talk about how we see it?
I, I don't think we need to step in each other. I mean, maybe you could, you could discuss any items that where there's not a, you know, obvious answer. Like you just started the answer to the question on the end or maybe you could provide a response memo.
Yeah.
And, and just highlight how some of the, you know, I know some of these are away. You'll address it if you continue your design. Other ones, if they're worth, if you feel, if you feel you should have discussion about it, then just tell us if you don't want us to repeat that.
Yes, yes. Well, let me just say globally that we thought that the memo was very helpful. We do intend to submit a, a point-by-point response and largely for almost all the points, you know, make the necessary adjustments to the, to the FBAF. And, you know, we are generally, you know, on the same page. I think that there, the, the one aspect of the memo that we might want to just, just clear our way now is the floodway minimalized to hit here and what, uh, materials we're going to be submitting to. We, we are on the same page with respect to the minimalized to hit here. It's been our intention from the beginning to submit a minimalized to hit here. It's going to be compliant with, with that. As you know, the only obstructions that will place the use of the roadway are piers that hold on to platforms. And the, the cubic area obstruction is very small. We intend to, to provide offsets in, in, in way of lowering the terrain in some of the areas where the, the floodway and the non-floodway areas meet, right? Where you have a parking area that straddles the two or a parking area that fits the floodway. We believe that we're going to be taking away, reducing the elevation sufficiently to offset the, the small amount of obstruction that's being placed by those piers. But I think Ellen wanted to talk a little bit about, you know, what, what paperwork we, we should create to, to evidence that offset.
So as we mentioned a minute ago, and Matt hit upon the impact of the work in the floodway is fairly minimal. It's basically consists of piers, wooden units, along with associated offsets. Most of the work or hard work is basically minor cuts, minor fills to the net of zero. And any pathways you see, whether they be footpaths or car paths, will be adjusted dirt.
Yeah.
Or will have light which is service. So our, the only real road you can have as far as the instruction in the floodway is basically going to be the piers. And we'll, we're currently evaluating that right now. I think we could terminate a maximum of less than 2,000 cubic feet of volume within the floodway. And we're evaluating that currently. And we will be following up regarding how to best handle that, model that, and present that.
Great. Okay. So, yes, I guess there'll be some communication being soon the, the paperwork.
Right. And that makes sense to me. I mean, if this were a more substantial amount of fill, you'd have to do like an approach model or something. But it's something like this. I think, and we have engineers who do this all the time, so just have one of them get over. But I think like a, like a mass balance type of thing, matching that volume and placing. Even with your piers, you have to offset that with something to, you know, take away so that you're not, not creating a rise. As long as that's all that's being placed in the floodway, then I think it'll probably be straightforward instead.
And, and Mark, you're correct. That's basically what we're evaluating it right now. The, you know, the, that impact we're storing there is minimal. And then we're, as Matt mentioned, as I mentioned, we're taking things out as well. So typically, we'll cut here, we'll fill there, place a roof here, remove a lot of trees. Once we have better numbers of how, which I'll do, discuss that.
Yeah. And one of the point I made in respect to the memo is that we do have a number of additional studies and reports that we are going to be submitting. We have them already. We do have a habitat study done by our ecological consultant. He did determine that there is, there is no habitat for the timbered rattlesnake. We'll be submitting that paperwork. We do have a report from our archaeological consultant and doing a cultural, sorry, fucking me. We have that report as well. And we'll be submitting those in the next few days.
And one thing I wanted to note, since the memo was written and was brought to my attention that the applicant did provide a notice of intent to the lead agency to the board and that was circulated already. So that step of the secret process has been taken care of.
That's great. I think, I think from our side, we covered the materials that we intended to discuss today. If there's any other questions from the board, we'd be happy to address them.
I just had to one, and, and I don't even know if this needs to be pointed out. I know it's in the memo. You mentioned DOH and the DEP are doing their review of the sanitary and the, and the water supply. We would just like to be copied in on their review. We don't have to do our own, uh, parallel redundant review of all that material. But to be able to follow that correspondence would be helpful for us.
I'd like to make a comment from the board.
I will.
Anybody can hear me.
Uh, you want to let me know we have done winter perpulation tests in the upperfield area. Good results. We're doing the follow-up obviously with the agencies. Being out there to witness those perpulation tests when we run them formally. And we will keep you in a loop despite DOH, DEP review approval. There's basically, from their perspective, there's basically four or five aspects that they're going to look at. The waste water, as you mentioned. The public water supply is a public water supply. Lots of regulated campground, lots of regulated new service establishment. So there will be quite a bit of agency involved there. Mostly DOH and some, some DEP as well.
Vivian, can you move the speakers? Hold on one second.
This is what I'm calling off.
Hey, hey, John, what did you want to say?
I would just make a comment that I will be generous and estimate that I understood maybe 5% of what just transpired. I, I don't know who's talking, what they're talking about. I, I don't know who's talking, what they're talking about, who they have represented, and maybe the other members of the board might have a comment about what percent of all this they understood.
I'd like to ask Alan Doobis a question if you have a moment. Alan, this is Art Christie.
Hey, I understand you have a.
Alan, can you hear me? Alan, can you hear me?
Uh, this is Alan, I'm here.
Okay. Alan, I have a question. You were saying that there's going to be pumping for the sanitary systems and I was just wondering where you're going to put the pump station under the, and number two is there's going to be a generator backup, I guess.
If you look at, uh, uh, the site, the site you mentioned earlier, Art answered a question. Uh, we will have a series of pump stations. They will be floodproof where they're within the floodway, where they're above the floodway. Uh, they will have security, but not before, because they would be in the floodway. Uh, they will have a combination of, you let's pumps, sufficient additional storage, backup power, as much as we can, necessary during the design phase, we'll make sure that we're sorry to backup pump and/or, and/or regional power management, as far as utilization, that we have assurance that it's a sufficient volume to handle the flood.
Thank you.
Those plans are still under development.
Thank you.
No problem.
I don't have any other questions.
No.
Anybody else have any other questions?
And then one more question. The anchoring is going to be, I'm sorry, I don't know how to use this. Can, can you hear me? Okay. And the anchoring is going to be adjusted from a FEMA 2,000 pounds of volume? Is that correct?
Did you repeat that?
Yes. The anchoring on the 10 platforms, Alan, you had mentioned 2,000 pounds of volume. And was that taken from a FEMA statistic or from an engineering point of view?
Uh, we, 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 we have tall, maybe about 2,000 cubic feet of piers column. Uh, each platform basically having 12 piers, they get it plus minus, you have around 10,000 number of piers. As far as anchoring, you know, like the posts will go to the ground. We're, we're really with the art and tag, to return the best anchoring system for them.
Thank you.
So, we done with these guys?
Yeah.
Yep, no question. Um, all right. So, uh, we're done with firelight. You left a note that next, we'll do branches next.
Okay.
I can't, I'm going to get my mic, it'll just screech.
All right, firelight, thank you. We'd like to move on to branches.
Thank you so much. We appreciate it. We'll do the CAC or the work session for Jason and Michael tonight. Thanks everyone.
Thank you. Anybody else to your top?
Thank you.
Come on up.
Oh my gosh, you're real.
Yeah, we're doing it old school. I really have referred to do these in person. I know that it can be a little tough over the internet. I have a couple of pieces of paperwork for everyone.
Who do we have here representing branches?
Um, Martin from Catterskill and Stephen from Branches.
Hi, Mike.
I'm not sure if, can people in the video conference hear this microphone? Can they hear the room?
Could, could you?
Can you guys hear your guys?
Mike Oriello, can you hear me?
Can Vivian turn her speaker down a little bit? Sorry, guys.
No, it's technical time.
Very frustrating.
Technical difficulties, I got it, it's not a problem.
Like smashing two technologies.
The world we live in unfortunately right now.
Give it a shot.
We good? Mike, nice to see you. Um, nice to see everyone again. I wanted first to thank everyone for coming out, um, a couple of weeks ago and visiting the site and walking through and everything, talking about all the, the process that we need to go through. Um, we received MMI's comment letter. Um, I actually just handed out two letters back in response to that comment letter. Uh, one is from Mike in response to the, uh, you know, the legal aspects of the project. The other is from Catterskill Associates. Mark, I'm sorry, I haven't had a chance to email it to you. Uh, I will email it tomorrow. We just put it together today at the end.
Is this what I got from Alan the other day?
Uh, no. Uh, to MMI, Ellen from MMI sent out their, their letter for your guys' review and for our review, which was comments on the project.
No, I have.
Oh, did you receive a flight? Yeah, yeah. I, yeah. Catterskill, Catterskill just had a chance to put together a response letter today. Um, so I'll be emailing that out to Mark as well, but I wanted to make sure I got paper copies in everyone's hands today. We're responding to MMI's, um, letter. Um, I think that is what we'd like to go through tonight, uh, and just try to answer any questions that came up, um, as part of that, as part of that site visit and this comment letter. Um, I think the first thing that was addressed was wetland delineation. Uh, you know, Mark Field checked that. We're not proposing any, uh, any wetland impacts, uh, to the site at all. We're actually going to avoid that completely. Um, there was a comment about the bald eagles, one of the things that we're going to be doing. In 2018, Norbert Quinter, our environmentalist, our environmental specialist actually addressed that. He's going to be revising that report for, you know, our current site plan to, uh, to show that there'll be no impact to the bald eagles. Uh, another had to do with the special flood hazard areas. We're going to be showing that on our mapping so that it's really clear where the special flood hazard areas are. Um, we did submit a no rise certificate to Rob Stanley, um, for, for the, for the work that we're proposing on the island, uh, that there'll be no rise to the floodway. I know we kind of went through that last planning board meeting. I know we went through that and feel our thoughts on that being that we, we feel that we're above that 100-year flood plane, uh, for the areas that we're going to be working in. Um, trying to think what else?
So I know one comment they had was that the FEMA maps and your findings disagreed.
So the FEMA, yes. So the, the FEMA maps show that there is a very small area that's on the island, that's that special flood hazard area, and then the rest is floodway. And we're not, we're not looking to, uh, to necessarily change the FEMA mapping if we're allowed to do the work under a no rise certificate and a floodplain, uh, excuse me, floodplain, um,
Development.
Development application. I think I lost my words for a second there. Uh, unless, unless we need to pursue that as part of this review.
Yeah. We, prior to sending the floodplain development application to the flood administrator, the town flood administrator, uh, we went through different, different options. One was filing a Loma with FEMA. The other one was having Catterskill Engineering put a no rise certificate together and a table that showed all the structures, all the proposed structures, um, where, where they were situated, like their elevation in relation to the 100, 100-year base flood. And then because each structure is on piers where the, uh, the finished floor would be in relation to both the base flood elevation and, and grade level. Um, and that table was submitted with the no rise certificate and the floodplain development application to, uh, to Mr. Stanley.
Mark, did you receive a copy of that? I, I, I believe I put it in with all the other additional paperwork that we had given you, uh, when we met on site. And if not, then it was on that flash drive.
The application for the, uh, the application to Rob?
Yes.
Yes. The no rise, sir.
And the no rise certificate, that's right.
I believe it is on the flash drive, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah. If I can clarify my, my comment about the format, what you're describing makes sense.
You can step closer.
Sorry. Sorry, Mark, we're having trouble hearing you.
What you're describing makes sense. You would show no rise if you're elevated two feet above base flood elevation. And, um, if the force of option is willing to sign off on that, then the only reason you need a Loma is that there are insurance repercussions.
Yep.
And that, that's something that you'd be aware of in a decision you'd have to make. Uh, that I, I would say that'd be the reason to proceed with the Loma.
We've, we've had that discussion and we want to get a little bit more information from FEMA on the, uh, you know, on balancing out costs and whatnot, what those ramifications will be. If we decide to pursue the Loma, we will, but I don't feel that as part of this project right now, if, if we're able to, uh, to be granted approval with the no rise certificate to, to jump that hurdle necessarily, I think it's unnecessary.
But related to insurance, we, we plan to try to get the Loma, um, the amendment, the map amendment for insurance purposes. We just weren't planning on incurring that cost until we knew that we could get planning board approval to move ahead.
Thank you for talking right now.
From?
I've lost track of who you guys are.
Uh, Martin Schmidt from Catterskill Associates.
And Steve, Steve Sanchez, the owner of the copperhood.
The masks certainly don't help.
Yeah, exactly.
There was also, uh, I apologize. There was questions about, um, the, the approval process as far as seeker is concerned. One of the questions had to do with Nina's particular use permit, uh, because we are building within a hundred feet of the Aesopis. We don't disagree that we need that. We did have a question about actually amending the seeker form. I believe it's question 13B. Because we're not going to be, um, impacting any wetlands or water courses, does the planning board wish for us to revise that? If so, I mean, we're, we're happy to, but I don't know that it's necessary.
What does it say currently?
Well, well, specifically in our response letter that we'll send to MMI, it says that, you know, the existing copperhood is within 100 feet of that secondary branch of the Aesopis. Um, and we agree that it requires a special permit review, um, based on, you know, town code, which is what we're doing here through this special permit process. What, um, what Martin is saying, that question 13B of the short EAF asks if the project will physically alter or encroach into any existing wetland or water body. And we answered, we answered no because we're not encroaching into the actual water body. We are within 100 feet. So we thought the answer was no, is because we're not developing
It was already there.
in wetlands or water.
I thought you were talking about the islands when you, the island you first said.
Oh, gotcha, I understood. Um, so I mean, I, I, you know, we defer to you guys on that. I don't know if you need us to change that or not.
You're not moving any closer to the stream.
No. And, you know, in terms of, in terms of other approvals, you know, the stormwater pollution prevention plan, I believe Martin is, is, um, going to submit that, um, you know, by the end of the month or early next month. And we'll obviously copy MMI and, uh, the planning board on, on the stormwater, um, pollution prevention plan.
Yeah, we will have greater than two acres of disturbance, so we're going to do a full stormwater plan. It'll be approved by the New York City DEP. Um, our intention is to actually have finalized, complete finalized site plans before, uh, before the end of the month. We'll shoot before. That'll be sent out to all the, uh, all the involved agencies and obviously you all will receive a copy of those as well.
Okay.
And, um, there was a, there was a question on the previous, uh, project just presented about, uh, being copied on, on all approvals. We already have a health department approval for our water supply system. It may be in the shared drive we shared with MMI, but if not, we can get, get that to you.
Certainly.
But we do have, we already have approval for the, the water supply system.
And I believe we've supplied a copy of that to the planning board as well. So there's a, an existing public water supply on the, you know, the roadside of the property that'll service the, uh, the building and needs some improvements. We've been approved by the DOH to make those improvements and it will be used as the public water supply. Um, if we're able to go through this site plan process and receive, uh, permission to do the floodplain development, we will also, or development within the floodway, we'll also be doing a second public water supply well, which we had talked about on the island itself, that will service the, uh, the buildings there. This way we're not creating any, uh, there will be no trenching or, or boring under the, uh, under the Aesopis in order to get utilities out there.
I think, well, there's, there's one other thing that was mentioned in the, in the comment letter, which was about closing the pedestrian footbridge and evacuating the island in case of hazardous conditions. And, um, in our response letter, we, um, we've highlighted that we, um, we've signed up for the USGS Water Alert System. Um, and we receive emails and texts alerts when the stream gauges, um, are within two feet of the, of the flood level to account for the delayed, you know, data that the flood gauges will, will send out. Um, so we'll have alerts set up for the gauge at Aesopis Creek at Colebrook, New York, um, at the Aesopis Creek at Alaven and the, and at the portal. And we'll make sure that if, if we get an alert that, um, you know, the, the water is, is rising, we'll make sure to evacuate the island. And in respects to the, the, um, in, in respects to the, to the, the secondary parking lot that we're building, gravel pervious parking lot that we're building on that lower area. Um, again, if, if the water levels are rising, we'll also institute an emergency protocol, make sure there's no cars in that lower parking area. Um, institute a valet system so that we can sort of fit everything in the top. Um, but we'll make sure that if there's any hazardous conditions, that we'll make sure that it doesn't pose any life and safety issues or property, um, property issues as well. Um, Mike, so that, that's, um, yeah, I was going to say that, that, um, and again, we'll send the Catterskill Associates letter to everybody, um, that addresses the, the site visit and, um, but since, Mike, since you're on, um, I believe that's Mike, isn't that Mike? Yeah. Um, since, since you're on, um, do, do you want to highlight the, your memo regarding the procedural items?
For, um, and to the board, what I did, I did prove this, uh, random. And because Ellen and Mark were not on this until very recently, they didn't have any of the benefit of kind of the background when we first came to the planning board. And, um, it was determined that we should go to the CBA for the area variance first. Let me just say that I think that Ellen's, um, review was very, very good and she is spot on when it comes to why a repeated review is usually favored, um, for under seeker for review of projects. In this case, because, um, the planning board initially wanted us to get a determination on that area variance, we were able to take the area variance on that area variance, we were able to take the area variance and use a portion of Seeker, which allows an applicant to do a segmented review, provided you meet the threshold test, which is that the review that you undergo is no less protective of the environment. And then, number two, whatever you determine in the first instance, this mean the area variance is not, quote, practically determinative of the second instance, which would be the site plan and special use permit. So, we did a, if you remember, we did a pretty lengthy analysis of segmentation. I think it provided a good background for why it was warranted in this instance, and for the ZBA granted the area variance. But then we're back here now for a continuing coordinated review with all of the rest of the involved and interested agencies. So, that's how we end up here. I wanted to give, the board already saw all these documents that I referenced, and I wanted to make sure that Ellen and Mark had a complete set of the record, if you will, since March. So, I just gave them copies of all that information, which took things through, and approved by the ZBA. So, we're still now, due to the board, to complete coordinated review on the site plan and special use permit. We also circulated that lead agency notice, Martin circulated the lead agency notice for this next round of special use permit that has been sent in.
Thank you, Mike.
Is there anything else you guys wanted to address with Mark and Ellen? Whether the camera's facing you.
Do you, Mark, Ellen, do you have any additional questions? Or would you like to just wait for Catterskill to send you their memo, and then we can continue the dialogue? Or anything else you'd like to address?
I don't have any other questions right now. I think you've answered some of them here, and I'll go wait to see the documents that you've sent in.
Yeah, sure. Yeah, we'll send you, obviously, what you requested in terms of a site plan with the special flood hazard areas outlined, and then we can revisit the no-rise certificate and the floodplain development application when you look at those documents.
Yeah, that special flood hazard area, floodway, all of that will be on our next set of plans that come out to you, as well as the finalized stormwater plan and everything else. Which, I mean, we're pretty much there with the rest of the site plan stuff, the stormwater is really the lingering thing. That's where we're at. I guess our only other question is, you know, next steps in the process. We certainly would love to be able to get to a point where we're at a public hearing sooner rather than later, so we can get any public input that we, that there might be, and just keep the ball, keep the ball moving.
Sure. Can you guys hear me?
Yes.
Oh, good. Are we required to do a seeker hearing for this?
A seeker hearing?
You don't have to, right?
No.
Yeah, okay.
Ellen, do you want to respond?
Yeah, it's at the board's discretion. At this point, if you'd like to hold a public hearing, then you may. And Mr. Moriello was sharing with me some fascinating legal case. The seeker public hearing would need to occur before, and an NDA need to be issued before the site plan public hearing occurs. Correct, my understanding of the legal case?
That's correct. This is the bizarre world that I inhabit. That is a case that was decided in the third department, which is our judicial department. The board does not have to have a public hearing for seeker. It's obvious if you're going to go to a determination of non-significance, but we would have to have a public hearing on the site plan and special use permit, no matter what. So, it's really to the board's discretion. If they feel they have enough information to dispense with a public hearing for seeker at some point, when we've answered all of the environmental questions the board may have, they could grant a negative declaration.
Cliff, I have a question.
Yeah.
Okay, this is Vivian Welton. I was told by someone who was previously involved in street management here, that the previous owner had a serious erosion problem beneath the hotel on the bank of the creek that they did not address properly. So, I was wondering what the situation is like at this time.
The, well, for Irene and Sandy, the site conditions are very different than they are today. NISAG, I believe, granted the previous owners a grant, and they used that grant or money to shore up the Copperhood Riverbank. Erosion was a big problem in the 2000s. The previous owners went to DC and went to the state and tried to get funding to shore up those banks unsuccessfully. But after Irene, NISAG provided those funds and built a massive six-foot retaining wall that separates the Aesopis from the coppered property.
Right, I see that on the map. I wasn't sure what that was above the retaining wall, if that was stable.
Yes, I mean-
Like engineers.
Between the hotel and that retaining wall, I mean, I've never witnessed any erosion conditions at all in that.
Okay, right, thank you.
No, Ron?
Yeah.
I hope so.
All right.
I mean, I believe that the memo, you know, new was that MMI had actually had a chance to review where we were at so far. They had a couple of comments. We've addressed those comments, those are the new items. And we're just, again, we're just trying to move on to the next steps.
Well, I know that.
Yeah, and in terms of the public meeting, I'd just be curious to know if there are any neighbors with any concerns, so we can address them in a timely fashion. The development, you know, on the island, what we call the island, is in a wooded area, so nothing new will be visible from Route 28 or any adjacent parcel. So, we don't think, we don't think there's any sort of, you know, sightlines or any issues there, any noise concerns. But we definitely want to address those questions and, you know, just see if there's any input. But, yeah, luckily, the Copperhood's been there for a very long time, and, you know, we don't have that many neighbors, but we're just curious.
Is everybody clear on the parking? Go ahead, Mark.
Thank you for these comments with regard to the, I made the comment in the memo about the operations plan in the case of a flood, and I realize that's not laid out anywhere in any regulations. It's kind of common sense comment, and we did a lot of flood studies in China, and all of that, and a proper storm, Irene. So, that's just intended to make sure you're aware of that issue. And I think what you suggested, the warning system tied into the USGS gauge is, you know, on the right track, that is the type of awareness that I was getting at in the comment. So, thanks for that.
Okay. Was everybody clear on the parking lot segmentation question that Mark and Ellen wanted to consider it all at once, and we went through the area variance earlier? You guys didn't have enough parking to start with.
Mm-hmm.
And I don't have a problem treating it separately, so they need, you guys need it for the hotel regardless of the island development.
Yeah.
Yes.
I'm okay.
Yeah.
Okay.
All right, okay.
Well, we appreciate you guys coming.
Sure, sure.
What are you gonna be looking for from us next, so that we can keep the ball moving?
I think just the stuff that we discussed, that's already on its way to us. We'll discuss it further, and we'll, you know, move towards getting you guys set up for a public hearing.
So, do you have to call a public hearing at the next planning board meeting, correct?
Yeah, we're gonna, yeah.
You can't do it in between planning board meetings, it has to be.
Well, the board, this is mine speaking here. The board will have to, I think, Stephen, we should let the board speak with Mark and Ellen about what their preference is, whether they want to have a public hearing on Seeker or not, and then make that determination at the next meeting. I mean, we could put in a draft Part Two of the Seeker EAF form, and the board can then decide if they think that a public hearing is necessary for Seeker, if they want to go ahead and make an NDA, and then schedule a public hearing on the site plan and special use permit. But I think we should leave that, you know, up to them to discuss with Mark and Ellen, you know, what their preference is.
Sure. I'm just asking mainly because that, if they have to call the public hearing at the next planning board meeting, it means that I have to be here for the next planning board meeting. Or I'll plan on being here so we can continue the conversation, that's all.
Okay.
All right, thank you. Thank you, everyone.
All right, next we got Orem. Those guys are in there somewhere. I see him.
Hi, guys.
Well, I need to go through all the comments that I've read, and I'd say that's the way to be for you to raise any of that or unclear that, you know, we were just wanting to, if we're talking about.
Okay, Steve, so this is your comment.
Right.
Do you think we should, what, come there, we're all, it's a money matter?
Um, and they have a comment, or a law group, not everything, but all of that. We're both standing, they have a really clear clarification on. We're sort of, you know, we understand, and sort of agree to everything, you know, that, they think it's a line of delineation. We have Joe Bridges out to the site, so we're even at to identify those areas. As you've been teaching, we've made progress on the Loma.
Now, who's this, Orem? Orem, man.
Nate Stager.
Nate Stager, I think. Who's talking to who?
So, one thing I'll lose, one quick, uh, project, we're actually working on a revised site plan, as we also work on weather, and one thing we're doing is actually reducing the well scope of the project, and this will be in our next form of site plan. Just a quick note, pretty straightforward, we're working on it, and we are reducing the road areas, particularly the further work, further west, western of the river, that pulls up around the side of the mountain out there. This is going to actually, uh, disrupt it down to eight, four, eight meters. Again, all those are in the extra visual, along with the westwards, and a little bit of modification, because, you know, one thing to know is, you're not so, you're showing there some of those improvements, the big, the elements have, have areas, designed to follow. So, all sorts of words in paper, I think, and, you know, like we said, it will be pretty straightforward, and clear.
You need to check your hand.
Other things, hotel, down below, one area of property, we're out there for the past few weeks, and last Friday, we had DPDs, meals, who kind of helped out there, as we did for a test, and selected that. So, we're still, we're making progress, and we're all planned and sufficient, everything.
Thank you. And we will be revising the EAF, and what we want to ask, I guess, maybe to sort of round out, we go procedurally, is even though we've reduced the scope of the project, and reduced the disturbance by over two acres, which is a nice significant reduction, we still trigger that threshold for a type of review. And so, I know that Mark and Ellen, by the way, all of that, we're about to pitch, I would say all of it, all of it.
And it's here.
So, do you feel we still have to make a meeting circulation? I guess the question is, the materials that we've previously submitted, that we were intending to reduce for the lead agency circulation, have those been distributed for right now? We have this meeting to actually distribute those materials for the agency.
As far as I'm aware, their notice of intent to be lead agency has not been circulated yet.
So, I guess my question then, is your, first of all-
Hey, Matt? I think that was circulated. And Ellen?
Yes.
Yeah, we've been without a secretary for a little while, so I can't verify that.
So, what I suggest, is when we, if it has been, we'll double check to see that it has been or hasn't been circulated. If it has been circulated, we make our next submission to be revised, and we'll be able to work, so we're, we're on the revised department of submissions, and revised EAF, which is that you suggested in your letter. We also maybe revise a notice to the lead agencies, excuse me, to the lead agencies, advising them of the project changes. So, if we've got to respond to that, there are need to be standard planning board lead agency, then I think we have to, the lead agency could possibly notify them that there is some changes to the project. But that will just be in our next submission. So, just a couple of things I wanted to find out, just so that you rest easy, or easier. That stream that you mentioned, that's actually 1,200 feet from the site, so that is a real submission. I know you've been touching on, we can have those, when, and access it, or what those, what those, actually are. And the other thing, we have a period, we're going to assess it, that you've submitted a draft one to be on site, and stay with the implications of all, and that will also be submitted on this next submission. So, with that, I guess we can wait to see, or find out, confirm whether the lead agency distribution has been made, and meantime, work towards our next submission, which we have a lot of work to do on. And if there was specific questions about something we did, the, in Mark and Ellen's letter, would it be okay to contact them directly on that? Or, because it would be something about how we're interpreting something on the wetland issue, or something like that? Can we contact the consultant, or should we still look at that, a couple letters to the planning board on the next submission?
I mean, in my, in my view, if it's a, if it's a question, like a clarifying type of thing, and certainly a conjecture, to you giving me a call directly if the board agrees with that. If it's something like the weather delineation itself, or the revised plan with the weather delineation shown on it, I think the board should, you know, whether you send that to me and the board at the same time, or if you may choose to distribute it, but it ought to go to, you know, they should see it as well as Ellen and I.
Yes, I agree with that. Yes.
But I certainly want to call, you know, if there's some clarifying question about one of our comments, we don't need to have a full, if one of the comments has to be asked.
So, I guess, if you have a question, you have to find that, that we did, the circulation was made. Thank you.
Is that something that you prepared?
Yes.
Okay.
This was prepared, and, 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 to then, to lead agency review, to make your, make the change to the, to the work here.
Okay, sure.
...areas that are available for parking. This has three sites, or about three spots right now. Um, so there's, yeah.
This would be driving paths.
Exactly, yeah.
And this is a area that could be built on?
Yeah, yeah, out here.
Okay.
Uh, yeah, there's three spots right here right now. And then we have potential spots there as well. So, uh, but right, right now, we're, uh, I mean, we're not really gonna offer seating. It's gonna be mainly takeaway. Um, we just have a small footprint inside for less than two hundred and seventy square feet. Uh, so we don't have room for much seating inside, uh, and especially with COVID. So, you know, we're focusing on takeaway for, for.
What, um, what kind of, are there gonna be food sometime?
Yeah, uh, uh, so.
Apologies if you just.
Specialty market, yeah, and we're gonna have things that are prepared and brought in. So, very little food prep onsite.
It's kind of a two-part operation. So it'll be like a specialty goods grocery store for like retail items and like for local products. And then also like a coffee and like local pastry selection as well, so.
Do you have, your business has a name or will be a?
Yeah, it's called Sparkwood.
Sparkwood, okay.
Do you have access to Kirk's Market lot in the back there?
The driveway goes right through there.
Right through there?
Yeah, there's entry points at both sides.
Okay.
Any plans to serve alcohol?
Uh, no.
So in those areas that you just showed me that were potential parking spots, would they also be potential outdoor seating?
Uh, there would be, uh, other spaces that would potentially be outdoor seating.
And that's something you might, you may do with next season?
Yeah, I mean, that's, that would be a conversation to have, like, you know, when the season allows for it. And obviously, you know, we see what happens moving forward with, with everything else.
Yeah, we have like a porch area, um, but it's not really ideal given that all tables would have to be six feet away from each other. It's not really able to do that, that's the plan, but.
That's COVID, that's now. I think you still need to do a plan to show us. You have to do the area calculations to show us the count so that we know how much required off-street parking you'll need. From what you said, you're gonna be able to handle it. You probably just need one for your employee, maybe a couple for visitors. But you do have to do the math. You have to show us where, how many seats you've got, uh, how much space you have on the inside. And then it's, and then Howie should be able to help you. It's a very straightforward formula to calculate how many parking spots you need based on the number of seats and square footage of retail.
Okay, um, but initially, kind of, you know, we're, we're really just gonna be takeaway, so.
Yeah, we don't want people sitting there for now.
Right, I understand that, but.
Yeah, but we don't want an idea restaurant.
This is my advice.
Mm-hmm.
You're going through the trouble to make the application. Draw a plan, do the math now, get it approved. Then when COVID goes away, you don't have to come back for anything else. You already, because parking is always an issue in the town of Phisham. So address it now.
Uh, there, I mean, there is a clause in the town code that allows for a one-time payment.
Right, but.
What about that?
It depends on the calculation. You tell, the calculations will tell you how much required off-street parking you have to provide.
That's only if you don't have enough.
Okay.
Yeah, that's, that's, um, so you, you have to, you know, show your, your seating area and then how many spaces are required.
You're not gonna have a problem.
Yeah.
But it's a step that you really need to do for approval because, you know, COVID is not something that's being recognized in building departments and plans. You gotta show the plan, do the math.
I guess our business concept is just based off of takeaway.
If you're only takeaway, it's a different thing. But then even takeaway, you have to do the math because, okay, are they walking from Main Street parking their car? Are they coming down? What's, what's the reasonable thing? I don't know.
So, so this is a zoning thing? Like, we have to work through zoning for this part?
That'll be in the building code.
No, it's through, it's through us.
Okay.
We just, we just literally need to know how many square feet of, um, of suit of like, uh, customer area. And then, cause then there's a formula for like X number of square feet equals X number.
Yeah, we have, it's, it's two sixty-eight square feet inside that's available to the public.
Yeah, you're not gonna have a problem. You just, you just need to do it.
Yeah.
Are you planning on any changes to the building that exists?
It's all existing. I mean, other than, you know, nothing structural at all, just, you know, interior.
And do you have plans for signs on Main Street?
Uh, we, we wanna know what exactly what we're.
Twenty, twenty-four square feet.
Twenty-four square feet, okay. And are, are we able to put one on the building as well? Uh, we're, we're set back a good distance, so.
Uh, but you, you will have, you will have one on Main Street?
Yes.
All right, so then between that sign and the one on the building, that has to equal twenty-four square.
Okay.
Um, you can get a, um, you can get a variance to add signs.
Right, if you, you know.
Yeah, if you need, because that, sometimes that happens for businesses that are located more, you know, farther back where they need, they might want multiple signs.
Now this shows entrance from the parking lot behind the supermarket.
There is an entrance there as well.
Ah. It's one from just Main Street, John, and one from behind the supermarket.
Yeah, but I mean, is that just informal or?
It is, I wouldn't say it's informal. And that, that parking lot is kind of informal itself, so, yeah.
Yeah, because the funeral home uses.
I mean, there's actually, people just cut through there traffic-wise, a little distracted there, so.
But you wouldn't be in car.
Yeah, no, that's, that's, it was existing, open, open, existing driveway there, so.
Is there any restriction on parking there at this time? Is that, who did, who belong, who owns the property?
Phisham Market owns it.
That's Phisham Market, so.
But you know, even the funeral home uses that lot when they have to go by.
Well, there must be some arrangement.
Yeah, so.
Have you guys, um, been able to, I know last time we spoke about meeting with Howie. Have you been able to connect with him?
No.
Is, is there a house very close by? What is this?
That's his house?
Yes.
That's your house? Oh, okay, okay.
I believe this heavy black line is the property line.
Oh, okay, so that's, your, your house is on a separate lot?
No, no, the.
This is your house?
This is this little.
This is your building, but this is what, you're the, you're the neighbor?
No, no, no.
Oh, that's the neighbor?
That's the neighbor.
Oh, okay, so there is a, a house very close to it?
Yes.
And, and what is this?
That's a, that's a workshop shed, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, and these trailers are yours.
Is there any bear, visual barrier between the house?
There is not.
So.
Is two, what's two sixty-eight? I'm sorry, I'm gonna cut you off.
Oh, no, that, I was just thinking, yeah.
What's two sixty-eight? What is that?
That's our square footage inside that's available to the public.
That's the public space is the two sixty-eight.
Right.
So you're one, one per three seats.
So how would the people coming to the shop pick up their, where, where would they actually go? Is there a door or?
Yeah, it scares up the patio and then it's.
So they would go up here and, and through here?
Exactly, yes.
Okay.
Yeah.
So there wouldn't be any traffic between the houses?
No, there wouldn't be any reason or, um, if anybody would wanna walk over that way.
Any cooking exhausts from the, in that direction?
No, no, we're not, uh.
I mean, you will be doing some cooking.
So we're, we have an agricultural license, so we have an agricultural license?
Uh-huh.
So, um, it's not, like, we're buying pre-made food. We're not cooking food there.
Okay.
So it's, it's one parking space per fif- for fifty square feet?
Fifty square feet.
So you guys need like five spaces?
Yeah.
So you just have to, we just need to see that you have.
We have a, we have a.
Just five spaces, that's, that's all we need.
Okay.
Anything else?
No.
So we have to do another site map for you?
Yeah, we just need, we just need to show the, the spaces on it.
You can do it right on this map.
Okay, I, we've got this right here. It has, the measurements done out, so, yeah.
Oh.
One hour left there. So, so let's, yeah, so that, let's, let's. Looks like it's a square footage?
It's a square footage, yeah.
What's gonna matter might be the dimensions, cause car spots are like eight foot by twenty feet.
Are they eight by twenty?
Eight by twenty, I thought they were nine by twenty.
Nine by twenty.
I suppose you could do nine.
No.
About seventeen by seventy. Right, is that what that says? Seventeen by seventy?
Yeah, I do believe up in the top.
Up there.
Yeah, seventeen by seventy, twenty-eight, seventy, and then fifty-five.
So we got two.
Yeah, this, this one's already paved out. That has basically three spaces right there.
So three and two.
Well, they have a.
There's plenty of, I mean.
There's plenty of room there.
I'm fine with that.
Yeah.
What else? You wanna say a ten?
I agree, they, they got, they got the width, they can park.
Yeah.
Any other questions for them?
So you, you've got approval for a new SEPTI plan? Is it gonna be completely?
The SEPTI's already in there. We have the paperwork.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, I can show you if you'd like a better.
Is that what this is?
Yeah.
Yes, but that's the only copy they have.
What are our rules for impervious coverage when it comes to, uh, dumpsters and that sort of a thing? You have, you have a place that's either concrete or asphalt to put a dumpster on for your trash?
Gravel, yeah.
Right. I'm not sure what our rules are. Most towns don't allow it on gravel. Cause they tend to leak, get messy and smelling.
Got it.
I don't know if we will be quite dumpster status. And we're, we're having pretty small footprint. We're gonna be pretty low impact, so I, I doubt that we're gonna require an entire dumpster for, for what we're doing.
Well, your business may pick up in the future, so you need to think about how big you actually can become, even though you're small size. I mean, I'm thinking of Mama's Boy. I don't know really how many customers they ended up having, but, um, you know, I'm sure with that big outdoor deck, that there was room to expand. But I think there, you know, there should be some demand for your coffee shop.
Yeah, there's nobody in there for three miles on a Thursday, Wednesdays.
I'm just curious, I should probably just go look, but the whole strip that now apparently belongs to the railroad?
Yes.
Is that, is that property, you know? Has that all been accumulated by the, by the neighbors? Or is it an actual strip, you know, barren strip of, that's obviously?
I mean, it's just, it's a real, it's a long lot.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's a long, narrow lot.
But what's on it? Have, have the other people?
No, I mean, there's, there's neighbors to either side.
Yeah, but are they using it as part of?
I want to know if they're, they're squatting over the, the other line.
No, no.
No.
There, there's like, it's basically tree-lined. I mean, the neighbors are right there at the other side, but, uh, the, um, to the west side, it's all, it's basically tree-lined. So, yeah, and the, in the summer, you can barely see that there's neighbors.
And they don't use it or come onto the property?
No. Yeah, and then they, they're kind of, on that, on the other side, they're pushed back with the yard space, so.
All right. Now, is there, is there, are there any trees between your, your house and the house nearby?
Our, our direct neighbor, no, no. So we're, we're kinda like right up against each other, but, uh, you know, we're, he, he knows what we're doing. He doesn't seem to have any issue with it, so.
Okay.
But, you know, we can always talk about defense if, if that's, uh, something he's, he's into.
And this is a lot of wrecked, so there's nothing you can do about it.
Oh, yeah, okay. I'm just wondering, you know, if there would be any problem, but apparently not.
No.
Dare we accomplish something tonight?
Yes.
Somebody wanna make a motion to send this to a public hearing?
I was just gonna say that. Make a motion to send this applicant to a public hearing.
Second.
Yeah, somebody, you gotta write it down, wait. I made the motion. Did you?
You wrote it down?
Yeah. All in favor, I'll be the secretary.
Aye.
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 All accept. All Chris B., Alan Schneider. I'll, I'll tell it.
All right, so let's do it.
Oh, on our next meeting?
At the next meeting.
Which is?
December ninth, no, yeah, December ninth.
Six forty-five.
Six forty-five, John?
You'll be the first.
You guys, the sixty guys will be first.
All right.
Maybe that's a good reason to.
So I gotta get, I gotta get, um, get all the Kerry to send us the, the.
Yes.
The letter, this process, the letters that are sent out notifying them of, um, your, your ten neighbors and what you're doing, so they can come and speak their mind if they have.
A mind just.
A mind to speak. But.
It'll be all right.
Do we need to bring anything?
Yes, bring all this stuff.
All this stuff, yeah, right.
Here, I'm gonna give it all back to you.
Thank you.
Do you could clarify some parking spaces on there?
Yeah, we'll.
Layout car shapes.
We'll do that with nine by twenty. We're just gonna have to make all the top, like, color copies of that, so, uh, I'll get that done. So it looks a little bit more like parking.
Well, you guys could appropriate it.
Yeah, we have the D fours.
So we definitely have to have the other people on there.
Yeah, yeah, thank you for your patience.
Yeah.
Sorry that we had a.
Semi-informative, what we could hear.
Right, yeah.
Uh, you guys keep the application and stuff?
Yep.
Yeah, you got it?
Yeah.
Yes.
We're all good here?
Yep.
Best of luck.
Seven nine.
Now this meeting went on live?
Yes.
Yes.
It was live. Oh, it was live, yeah.
Yes.
I don't know how much, does she, well, I guess she could hear. I guess you could hear right now.
Yeah.
When you were over, you were being shoulder. How much, what did he say it was called? Sparkwood?
Hey, what's it called?
I think he said Sparkwood.
The name of the project?
I think he said Sparkwood.
Sparkwood, oh, yeah.
Sparkwood?
Parkwood?
Sparkwood, like a spark though.
It is Sparkwood.
Oh, Spark, okay.
Would ignite wood?
Um, all right, before we leave.
Was there supposed to be, you, you were saying there was supposed to be a public hearing?
There was, yeah, from Pushe.
Tom Pushe.
But because Kerry hasn't, Kerry, Kerry hasn't been in, when the meeting got moved from the fourth to the twelfth, the public hearing never got, the notice never got put in the paper.
I, I spoke to a neighbor, Janet and Tommy, they're, they're okay with it, you know? I, I think that's their only neighbor on that side and, and that I'm not sure.
I was splitting the hotel off from his house.
Oh, yeah? Oh. I wonder if he's gutting it out or, oh, you guys are there.
Cleaning it up.
Cleaning it up, yeah.
But they, they, I, I just spoke to Janet, basically, Tommy's the homeowner, but they're a couple from way back and, uh, they're at Nine Tremper. Uh, she said they didn't get anything from the town about.
That's what he's saying. She never sent out the, uh.
Okay, yeah.
The notices. She's been out a while.
Because the deed got changed because of yesterday.
But I mean, she just didn't get anything notifying about that proposal. Um, but she's saying, basically said, well, whatever Tom wants to do, we trust him, you know? And, and I told her that it probably was to their benefit if they make the whole, the commercial part of it smaller, and so they were okay.
But we can't do anything. They gotta, we have to have the hearing, that's mandatory.
Oh, all right, but I mean, technically we had it.
That's why, yeah, Don even showed up here tonight.
Oh, yeah, he was.
Yeah, he was, I'm sorry, Don.
Oh.
So when he, what about, what about these other projects? Any thoughts, comments, anything?
Well, I'd like to do a site visit. I really, I wanna see what's going on at Branches. I wanna see what's going on at, at Arm, um, even though it's hard to see when they don't really have anything to show us at Arm because they didn't do any grading or really deciding where everything was gonna be.
Arm is steep.
I'm glad that they're downsizing the project because I, I'm getting a little community feedback about their, people are concerned about a big project there on Plank Road because, you know, it is kind of a small, quiet area, um, and I, I'm concerned about the in and out, you know, like I, like I mentioned. It's a very strange kind of driveway, and they're gonna change it, yeah.
So when you look up.
They will be making the road wider.
When you look up, um, where the road snakes up now, you can kinda see a flat spot from Plank Road. It's gonna come straight down from that flat spot.
Okay, but that's still actually steep access.
It's kinda steep, but it's better, it's better visibility at the bottom.
Yes, definitely.
They're gonna make a, um, a flat, we went over this at the site visit. They're gonna make a flat spot at the bottom, so you don't like, you know, in the winter.
My concern is that Plank Road is not gonna have a lot of traffic between the two projects.
Yeah, that's what the community is concerned about.
That collapses whenever it feels like it.
What's that?
It collapses into the stream.
Exactly, exactly.
I'm more confident, gets these drops, you know, the spots just break off.
And I live on Plank Road, so I know exactly what you're saying.
I mean, they're doing caddages and they wanna do a spa up there and they have the, the two houses. It's a big project.
I know, I know.
But I'm wondering, I see, how, has Maidstone been operating as a hotel in the recent past?
No.
No, cause I didn't even know it was there.
It's been a private residence.
Okay, okay.
Cause I've been up there and it's just these stone houses that are up there.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, and they have like some kind of a water supply house they wanted to show us, but it, um, I mean, the health department's gonna really take care of that. I mean, they'll be all for them with UV lights and treatment systems and, um, and, uh, Mark and Ellen had commented about the oil tank size. They showed it as TBD.
Oh.
I don't.
Oil? They're gonna keep with oil?
I, I think they're just, yeah, I, I don't think.
They're not uncommon.
Yeah, I think that was.
My neighbor has it left.
Yeah.
I, I mean, that might even just be a placeholder for their heating system. I don't, I'm not necessarily that concerned about specifically how they're heating things. And that was in one of the emails I sent out.
And Uncle Pete said they're only a six-month operation.
She'll be smaller.
Yeah.
And that, the whole anchoring thing, that's, I wanna, I wanna see how they handle that, you know? Cause there's gonna be, there's gonna be, um, sewer and electric going up through there.
Yeah.
And they, initially, they talked about casting it into like concrete and now it's all, those are on wooden piers. And it's still, I mean, FEMA speaks for the anchoring. I wanna see if Mark, I feel like I couldn't really talk without starting a feedback.
And there's gotta be some better way to communicate with this.
It's so terrible.
This is terrible.
It's so terrible.
It really is.
What's, what's terrible, the?
It's home.
You are, I mean, you could probably hear everything.
I'll tell you, you gotta do it with a headset. It's, we don't have a decent sound system here. It, the headset's the only way to go.
Or can we just all be home with our own laptops?
But Microsoft.
It's something to consider, you know, you know, but, but then we also have to do stuff face-to-face with people.
Right.
Or we do like Woodstock, make everybody Zoom. Those folks should come in by Zoom.
Everybody could have.
Yeah.
But I, Zoom is a lot easier.
We can't hear anything.
Yeah, but without a headset, it's impossible.
John is right, he didn't, he said he didn't hear anything.
Well, if we were home, no, if we were home, like home with your own computer.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, not, this, this thing with the computers here and all, like, that's, it just doesn't work.
But I still had a problem because I was right in front of my screen, but there was so many things blocking what I was seeing. There was like a, a menu bar and.
And the map's only this big.
And I couldn't see the people who were talking because they weren't showing up on the screen. Now with Zoom, it does that. I'm, I'm used to Zoom and it's, you know, when someone speaks, even if they cough, suddenly they're up there.
That's a, that's a different setting.
Maybe it would be better if we had a big television screen in here.
Yes.
Like we have at work in our conference room, and everybody's up on the screen and we're sitting at the conference table.
That's the way to do it, a monitor.
That's the way to do it for sure. This is a puppet show.
Yeah. So for the last several people who were talking, I couldn't see who was talking.
By the time, yeah, I could, I could, I could barely hear Matt Rudicoff speaking.
Right, I never saw his face on, on screen.
That, yeah, that is a setting. You can make it pop like, it zeroes in on whoever's speaking.
I wonder how you do that.
That's gallery is what that mode's called.
I couldn't find a, a menu that said gallery.
We could, we could make it the protocol that say, that says, if you're gonna come into a meeting, you have to have your camera on, period. I mean, we can make that rule.
You mean, not everybody had their camera on? I guess it was one person that had.
I don't think Matt, I don't think Matt had his camera on.
Oh, well, that.
The lawyer for, um, uh.
Moriello?
Called it, yeah, Moriello called in.
Well, he had his camera on, Michael.
Oh, did he?
Yeah.
But you could still call in and be seen, yeah.
Yeah.
If we have a minute, okay? Uh, in their description, it says this fifty-nine, that this fifty-six point nine eight site currently contains the former Uncle Pete's campground facility with eighty camp sites and a number of cabins and the outbuildings and some in derelict condition. Well, in our ordinance, in a flood plain, you can only improve a derelict building by fifty percent of the assessed evaluation at the time when you start it. That should be something that we have to look into. Cause it sounds to me like they were just going to knock them down.
Knock them down, start over.
And also, they did mention something about they were leaving spaces for people to put up tents, camping spaces.
Eight spaces.
That's new, too.
Yeah.
That's new. I didn't hear that before.
Yeah, I've been looking at my notes.
No, they added, cause they initially said they weren't gonna use them, and then they said they wanted to, because they're already there, they're gonna use just tent sites. Um, and then they're keeping that little brown trailer. They said they're keeping it and improving the inside.
Oh, the tiny house, like those are the tiny houses?
Tiny, yeah, they're, um, but they're not changing it, they're keeping it.
If I was trying to put something over on the planning board, this would be the ideal situation. But we have no idea what they're talking about and what they said the last time and, uh.
And plus no secretary.
And I think they said tonight, I, I might've heard it wrong because that was a little bit distant away, but they said that they were going to be closer to the Asopus than the one hundred feet.
The tents. That's the tents only.
On the ground.
Yes, all the platforms are still, there was a demarcation line drawn on the map.
Right.
All the platforms are still that hundred feet away.
Okay, cause it says here that it can't be, uh, it confirms that all development will be a minimum of one hundred feet from the Asopus creek.
What they stated was.
So is a tent a non-developed?
They're using the existing tent sites, so they're not developing any.
So you bring your own tents, so it's not really developed, it's just a pad.
Yeah, so the, the tent sites that are within the hundred-foot setback are existing.
Yes.
I heard him say that, and that they're just pads, so you come with your own tents.
I mean, they're the ones, those are the ones we walked right by the creek.
Right.
Those dirt along with the picnic table.
Yeah, there was a picnic table there, that area was there.
I'm assuming there's a bathroom facility for those tents to use.
They'll have to go back to the main building, I guess.
Yeah.
Well, they said they're gonna have pump stations too that are gonna pump them up further toward Plank Grove.
Yeah, towards the, yeah.
Well, they said they were gonna have, uh, bathrooms at every.
Cause you got a bathroom at every platform, yeah.
Yeah, every.
We still haven't seen where there's like pump stations that are gonna.
Yeah.
We haven't seen that, right?
And when I was reading the ordinance and looking into it, it also says, and I was looking for this particular project, that all utilities have to be four foot above the floodplain, base floodplain level. So I assume there's gonna be some fencing or some type of landscaping or something that enables them to get the electric or whatever.
Right, cause when they were here last time, oh, last, last time I was here, they were talking about putting all that underground, and I'm like, what are you kidding me? And it's, and a floodplain?
Yeah, and when I went there and I looked at that, I said, you, you're not putting electric underground here.
Well, I think they said today that they weren't going to put anything underground.
So how are they gonna get?
It's gonna have to be built into the landscaping or whatever, you know, into a box-type fence or something or the, but I think that's something. I don't have my ordinance, but I found it under the floodplain that said four foot above floodplain, base floodplain elevation.
Yeah, that makes sense, yeah.
Yeah, sure.
I mean, the webinar I just watched, they're saying that the FEMA has certain regulations, the state has certain regulations, but the local regulations actually should be more strict in some situations, things like that, yeah.
Well, Vivian, it, what the law says is that you have to abide the most stringent law.
Yeah, and they were, they were recommending that the local boards put in more restrictive regulations for certain cases, yeah. So I, I had, I had a question that was raised in my mind based on that webinar, was that the flood, uh, management administrator, who would be Rob, does he have to weigh in on all of these projects?
I was, I was talking.
He's supposed to, yeah.
Yeah, I mean, there were certain things that he was actually supposed to require, um.
Vivian, when I was floodplain administrator, what I did was, if I got a project to this magnitude of any of these, right? I would just call up FEMA in Albany and I would say, listen, here's what I have, you know, give me some leadership here.
I, I think that we need some advice for sure, yeah.
Why don't we have Rob at our next meeting to answer?
I.
Cause he's, he's the town expert on this stuff.
There, there are people up there that their jobs are actually to help municipalities through situations like this. I know the fellow that I was dealing with for many years was a gentleman named Alton Napp, and he's since retired, but he was wonderful. He, he would come down and sit and have lunch. We could talk over everything, walk around and see it. So I know it's available.
So there was a couple of, um, websites that they, they gave as resources. One is a resource to help you determine whether there's no adverse impact, and that's floods.org. And then there was another one, um, for wetland regulations, uh, ASWM.org. So, yeah, we're supposed to, we're supposed to have a bunch of regulations in place, and I, I assume we do. But, um, I wonder if they're easily to, how, how would we access, how would I access our regulations? Just to be able to read them.
Plane stuff?
Regulations for what?
The R floodplain regulations, the local reg, like the one you were talking about.
Just go, you go right into the code and there's a whole floodplain section.
And in our, on our town website?
E, or E code?
Well, you're.
Oh, on the code, okay.
And it's, it's very good, and it's really self-explanatory.
Yeah.
No, I'm getting, I'm tired. I hadn't had Vivian yet.
I didn't, I can't.
Vivian, I'll give you my phone number, you can call me and I'll give you the second, fourth.
Oh, okay.
Alright, John, why you got this conspiracy theory going on here?
So I do have a, also County Planning Board report. It obviously wasn't distributed because we don't have Kerry. I did, I did email it to her. Um, I don't know if you want me to go through. It's nothing of great significance. Well, I don't know if anybody wants me to. It's nothing of great significance, I could even.
Okay, no.
Yeah.
I made a motion to her, John.
Okay.
I gotta stand up this way past my bedtime.
Second motion.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
All right, hi.
Write it down.
Ellen, we're done.